Good evening, everyone. And good evening, residents of Litchfield, and welcome to the August 22, 2018 school board meeting. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any revisions? Or have you done it? No revisions. Summary of non-public from July 18, 2018. Mr. Berkman, a motion to approve the non-public minutes of June 20, 2018. Mrs. Harrison's second motion, motion carried, 401. Mr. McDonald abstaining. Mr. Myers made a motion to accept the nomination of Cody Hertz as CHS English teacher at a salary of $56,598 for the 2018-2019 year. Mrs. McDonald's second, motion carried, 500. Mr. McDonald made a motion to accept the nomination of Margaret Brady as CHS Special Educator Teacher at a salary of $55,538 for the 2018-2019 year. Mr. Myers, second, the motion carried, 500. Mr. Burke made a motion to approve the increase of a special educator position from part-time to full-time. Mrs. Harrison's second, motion carried, 500. Mr. McDonald made a motion to accept the resignation of...
Leslie.
Leslie? Leslie Grant, CHS Special Educator. Mrs. Harrison's second motion, carried, 500. I don't believe we have any presentations or recognitions at this time.
We don't. I did just want to take an opportunity to make sure the board wanted us to continue with the E3 award recognition program that I guess started last year, maybe?
Yeah.
So empowering excellence in education. So our effort going into the year would be to continue to communicate and try to have nominees that we can bring forward.
Uh, no.
So that brings the superintendent comments.
So a couple of comments. So we've been really gearing up to make sure that we're ready for opening day. It's a...our teachers will come back a week from today, or a week from yesterday, actually. So, and I want to invite the board to come to the opening day session in the morning, if you're able. We'll be here. We're going to kick off at 7:45 in the auditorium. And we have kind of a program scheduled till about 9:15 or so. And so you're welcome to join us. We'll recognize service awards. I know Brian will kind of kick it off to introduce or welcome everybody back, but board members who are there, and by all means, wear your shirts so that we could, you know, if we have enough people there, we could do a photo at that time, and if not, we can do that at the next board meeting. And just so you know, the rest of the time for the opening day, we then have a special education PD session scheduled, so all staff, we're going to divide into three groups by level, and we'll present some information for our folks, just a good general overview of special education in 504. So that'll be a PD training opportunity for all staff. We'll have a barbecue lunch, which is part of our welcome back to everybody, and then they'll head back to the buildings to do some additional PD for the rest of the day. So that'll be our opening day kickoff. And then, of course, students are going to arrive for their first day on Tuesday, the 4th, after Labor Day, and so that'll be our kickoff with students. So we're in good shape for that. And we'll talk more about that as we go through the session tonight. We are in the...undergoing the process of possibly having a special guest join us. So the fact that Litchfield is having its very first full-day kindergarten in brand-new space has drawn some attention, and so some folks have expressed an interest in joining us. But I won't say anything further because I don't know how all the schedules are going to work out and come together. But we're doing what we can to really have that be a key thing because that's a big first for the district. Any questions on the opening day or the PD stuff? So let me talk a little bit about kindergarten and grade-one enrollments. So we've been monitoring those numbers very closely throughout the summer, and I think that it's an example of, you know, if you build it, they will come. And so we really have enrollments that are pretty robust for the start of the year. So our kindergarten number right now, this is the number that are enrolled and committed, is 79 students. And our grade-one number is 89 students. So those are the two most unpredictable numbers because you're never quite sure if you reached out or had everybody who's done the enrollment. And certainly, first grade not having had the kindergarten last year or having a part-time kindergarten makes it a little more difficult to predict. But those are the numbers that we have. So what does that mean? What's the impact of that? So let's talk about kindergarten. The 79 students are then going to be spread across four teachers. That means that we will have three classes that will be at 20 students and one class that will be at 19 students. So one class will be smaller by one. And remember that our policy for kindergarten is class size of 20. So we're at the cap or at the guideline. And so another thing that I think is important for us to note is what it looks like in terms of additional adults that are in the room. So when you hear a number of 20 and you think one teacher with 20 students, especially 20 kindergarteners who are trying to adjust with a brand-new school year, the actual situation is that we have four para-professionals also who are in those rooms, right? So there's one in each of the kindergarten classes as a program para. And there are two one-on-one para-professionals who are assigned into the kindergarten to work with special needs children who need the one-on-one.
That we know of right now.
That's correct.
There could be more.
And there could be more than 79.
That's true.
I mean, there's a possibility that that number could go up or down. There could be somebody who's enrolled who has transferred, and we just don't know that yet. So it's a little bit influx, but...so that gives you a sense of what we're looking at. So our child-to-adult ratio is closer to...it's kind of...it's really closer to 10 to 1 because it would be the teacher and the para in each room. And then with the one-on-ones for those students who need it, you know, you could take that ratio even further. Any questions on kindergarten? I want to make sure that I take these one by one.
I think kindergarten, if I'm not mistaken, if you go back two years ago, I think the average was 19, 19 and 1/2 students per class.
So it's not abnormal, isn't it?
It's a little high, but I mean, like I said, just two years ago, that's what the numbers were.
So moving up to first grade, so as I said, we have 89 students who are registered as it stands right now. And again, we have four classes, so there are four teachers. So when we do the math there, we find out that we have two classes that will have 22 children and we have two classes that will have 23 children. So again, the policy is 20 as a guideline, so we are over that guideline with the 22 and 23. When we look at the para-professional situation, we don't have the classroom paras assigned in first grade. What we do have are a series of one-on-one paras for individual students who need that by their IEP, or there are some shared paras driven by the IEP also. So among the four teachers, one classroom has one-on-one and one shared para. One classroom has zero paras. One classroom has one shared para, and the other classroom has one one-on-one and one shared para. So it really...it's driven by the nature of the students who are assigned to that class in terms of what the ratios look like. So when we do the math out on it, you know, we're more at, you know, it's sort of a 22 to 1 in the classroom without the para, but then it's 10 to 1 for, in terms of adults in the room. So that's our landscape as it stands right now in first grade. I don't know if you have questions on that?
No. I was just going to make the comment that if you look at the New Hampshire School Board Association's projections in 2015 for our first grade for 2018, 2019, they projected us by 62.
I think it's, I mean, it's a good trend that we have increasing enrollment in the early years, but it is concerning that we're over our policy cap, you know, our guidelines policy for first grade. Is there, you know, I'm a little bit more concerned with first grade just because kindergarten has that full-time program para. Do we have any wiggle room as far as looking into hiring program, opening up a program paras for first grade?
So I think that's something that we can...
Looked into that.
We can take a look at. So budget-wise, Corey, maybe you know, are there...is there anything budgeted in that slot for program paras in first?
Not that I'm aware of, no, not in first grade.
And we filled all the teaching budget slots. It's not like we have unfilled teaching slots, right?
Right, right.
So our best case would be to look at the program para as a possibility, but we'd have to then locate a revenue source to figure that out. And I think the other piece is that right now, we have a number of unfilled para slots across the district. So I want to make sure that I say it correctly. I don't have that number in front of me, so I'm not sure how many we have.
Are the kindergarten program paras full-time or are they part-time? The kindergarten program paras that are there all day, every day, are they part-time or are they full-time? Like, are those benefited?
I assume they're part-time. I don't believe they're benefitted.
They're part-time? Okay. All right, that was my question.
In first grade, when you look at our policy as far as what we're looking for for maximum and minimum students, we're six students over in first grade right now.
Yeah.
It's max like 83, and we're at 86, 89.
Yeah. So it seems like every class in first grade at least has another para except for one. Is that correct?
That is correct. So the four classrooms...
There'd be something we could do for that one teacher, you know? Well, and my concern too is if it's a one-to-one para, it's not the same as someone who can help out with every student in the class. I mean, they're really just dealing with that one student. So it's not...it's not the same...in practice, it's not the same ratio as having two teachers like we do have in kindergarten. You know what I mean? It's not a teacher and an aide. It's a IEP-driven para.
According to the...the college sent us the hiring update, there's no positions according to the most recent GMS.
That document?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that inaccurate or...
I'm not sure that's accurate because we were talking today about para slots. So in fact, I know we had a resignation today, so it's that fluid.
Does it show four at LMS but none at Griffin?
So I...it might be, I think the four at LMS are sticking in my head. There may not be any at GMS that may be accurate then.
And just looking at the numbers, is there wiggle room at LMS for any adjustments to support with the...there are what, 17 down?
Which number are you looking at for...
I'm looking at the actual and projected enrollments.
So if we look at LMS, and you can see there's a difference between fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth, right? So the seventh grade is sort of the last of the large classes working its way through. And I think we've already taken a reduction in positions in fifth and sixth to compensate for that. So I'm not sure there's a lot more we can do.
Yeah.
So can we look at, I don't know if I should make a motion or if that's, you know, it's a board thing or if it's a superintendent thing to look into getting some more staff in first grade because it's...first grade's a big year. That's, you know, kind of building foundations, and I want to give them as much support as we can.
I don't know what you've traditionally done. I mean, I think...
Yeah. I mean, that's...
We recognize that from the education side also, but then, you know, it's going to be making choices within the budget because there's not...
That's what it comes down to.
There's not something sitting there that we could say, here it is, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So but if you're directing us to go back and roll our sleeves up and to try to figure that out, you know, I think it would be helpful if we had that sort of direction, that this is what the board would like, and then, you know, we'll have to dig in.
Okay.
I think the class side is bigger than what we want, but at the same time, I don't think it's to the point where it's not controllable.
But do we want manageable and legal or do we want good solid foundations?
Within legal, within...
No, I know, I know. But I'm asking, do we want...do we want our first graders to have a year that is, it is fine and good, and/or do we want them to have a strong foundation? And can, you know, I have faith in our teachers that they can do it, certainly, but can we do more for them? So I don't know. I guess I'll...can I make a motion to see how the board thinks or...
Motion for what?
A motion to add para-prof...or program paras to the first grade classrooms for this coming school year.
In all four classes?
Or to shared paras between four classes.
So you're talking two part-time positions, two full-time positions?
Two part-time positions.
The thing I want to look to do is first, you know, find out from Scott what Scott feels his needs are.
Right.
Probably find out from the first grade team what they think their needs are rather than us just guessing what their needs are.
Sure, that works too.
Because right now, we're talking the class size is just a little bit above the norm. Just slightly above.
Well, shouldn't maybe approach Devon and see are there adjustments that can be done in the existing budget for moving any around if they're shared somewhere else?
And again, not know what the mix is in those classes either as far as any of the needs.
Right, I don't, but I also feel like, you know, school starts in a week and a half. So I guess we'd like more information from the first grade teachers and from Scott and see if that's something that they would like us to pursue.
Yeah, and I'm sure that Dr. Jettie can have conversations with Scott as far as what his needs are. Then it's going to be a matter, I mean, if something's needed, if we can find in the budget to do so.
Right.
But I mean, that's going to be a decision as far as the administrators, what they're looking for.
Okay.
And like I said, talk with the first grade team also and find out where they need to...
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
So my notes on it are have a conversation with Scott. Just identify needs, make sure teachers are able to weigh in on that. We'll do a budget review, and then we'll be here again on, I think, September 5th is our next meeting. So, you know, we can come back and say this is where we sit and what we think we might be able to do. And I think that'll give us the opportunity to find out what happens on day one, which is either 89, more than 89, or less than 89.
Right, right.
So that'll have some bearing on...
There's still a chance that in a few weeks, we, you know, some, yeah, there's some change there. All right, thank you.
So you just mentioned volunteering in one of the first grade classrooms. I mean, is that something, do we want to outreach to parents or guardians or volunteers to say, can you come help us out in the first grade? I mean, is that something that we want to put out there?
Well, again, I think first we need to find out the need.
Yeah.
Okay.
Before we like, I mean, I think helping the classroom is always welcomed regardless of like how many students are in the class, always like if someone can help by the read or just help with math or whatever it is. So the help is always welcome. But now Scott may have some other ideas too, that maybe there's other places he can look and pull from.
Were there any other enrollment questions or things that the board, you've got the full report, right? So I...
Yeah, we're up to 90 in fifth grade. That's exciting. Okay.
And there are four teachers in fifth grade?
Yeah. That's the other high, another high one, but it's older kids, so...
Yeah.
All right. So the next topic I had was the Program of Studies, and so just wanted to review, I think we identified a potential discrepancy, and so I just wanted to get back to the board regarding that. So if you remember, the high school handbook had language in it that talked about the requirement for a senior English course. And so frankly, the language confused me a little bit because I'm like, is that talking about a specific course or is that saying during the senior year in English? So I went back to the high school, and I said, where did that come from? How did that get added? And basically, we then went to the Program of Studies, and in the Program of Studies, underneath the course called Senior English, it said, this course is required of all students in their senior year unless they enroll in the Honored Senior English or the AP Lit. So those were the two courses that allowed a student not to take that course. So they said, it's here, it's in our Program of Studies. We searched it all the way back to 2014. It's been there since at least 2014. And so they said, all we did is take the language from that handbook and put it in the other handbook. And they said, well, they just saw since the board had approved the Program of Studies that that was understood, so they just wanted to be consistent and have it be in both places. But then that raised for us a question of the policy because policy IKF that the board had amended back in January doesn't have that language in it either. So at this point, it seems like we should probably amend the policies to be very clear about what it is that we expect and bring that forward to the board also. So but I want to be really clear. We had one document that said this. Now we have two. We should make it three with the same language.
Yeah. And of course, Studies has had that in there for the last four years.
Yeah. So Bill had on his desk the, all the way back to 2014, and it was there. I said, you don't have to go back any further. If it's been there that long, it's, you know, it's ingrained in what we do, so, yeah.
It's just missed in our policy.
Right.
I guess my, oh, sorry. I guess my question, do we know why they picked that one course in the day of individualized learning that they have to take this? And if you have a student that really wants to write, or if you have a student that really wants to, why this one course? I, that's the one that just keeps coming back biting me, is why the one course instead of take English, take something that interests you?
I think the idea behind it was it was going to help them with their writing their college essay, business letters and things like that. But by senior year, I think it's kind of late to start writing your college.
Well, we can inquire to Jody. I don't recall what the reasoning was behind it, but I'm sure Jody can...
That was something like that, yeah.
That's on it. But it is what we've been doing for several years, so. So maybe we can ask Jody at the same time.
Yeah.
As we're looking at the policy. And it's in the handbook, and it's in the Course of Studies, and that's where we're going to go right now. We'll just update our policy for now.
Let me ask that question because, and that was my point with aligning three documents. And it doesn't mean this one was the right one either. So but if they can articulate why that course, what is it about that Senior English? And then we'll go from there. Good.
That'll bring us to community forum.
All right, you've got to lead me through this. I've never done this.
First stop by stating your address, please.
Amanda LaSard, 14 Deerwood Drive. I guess I'm here on the kindergarten and first grade numbers. As Tina said, the kindergarten numbers with, I thought it was a full-time para. So can somebody explain to me what a part-time para means?
Hours under 35.
Essentially, they're there the full, the full day.
Okay, so essentially, they're there the full day. So that doesn't worry me. The first grade definitely worries me in that when you're looking at first grade, especially this year, we have, you have no idea where these kids are coming from. Some of them have been in half-day kindergartens, some of them have been in private kindergartens, some of them haven't been anywhere. And they come in, I'm a teacher in another district, they come in with nothing. I mean, we have first graders that come in with absolutely nothing, barely know their letters. And so those numbers worry me. And you say that there are paras in every room. Well, we know a one-on-one para is no help because they've got a student. A shared para, they may be help, they may not, depending on how many IEP students they have in that room. So I think as our foundational year of first grade, that's worrisome. And I know, you know, from talking to other people and from my experience in schools that that number would be the one I'd be worried about. When you say in fifth grade, there's 90 kids and 22 kids in a class, that's not a big deal. But to have 22, 23 little tiny first graders, some of whom have never been to school with no help, that's scary. So that's just my take. I mean, it sounds like you're going to look into it, but to look into it after school starts is a little, a little worrisome. I have an incoming kindergartner, but I'd be more worried about the first grade numbers than the kindergarten numbers personally if there's a full-time para in the, or part-time, full-time, whatever you want to call it, in the kindergartens.
Again, we'll have discussion with the principal. Just keep in mind, I mean, right now, at this moment, I couldn't tell you what the paras are, if they're one-on-one paras, if they're joint paras.
Well, he told us. He told us that it's about one-on-one or shared.
So we got that data from our...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, so we did know that they were one-on-one and shared.
Right. So it looks like two of the classes have one-on-ones and shared, one has a shared and one has nothing.
Okay.
So, I mean, but it all depends on the makeup of the class. I mean, a shared para may be helpful, it, you know, it may not depending on, I mean, if there's five kids in there that are sharing that para, that para's not going to be helpful to the other kids.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? That'll bring us to school board comments.
Oh, I did want to say something about, you know, Phil Martin passing and how, you know, how much he gave of himself to our district and to our schools. I think he built the music program, one of the founding members of the music program here at Campbell, and, you know, he's left a legacy behind, so just wanted to acknowledge that and...
I did talk to his wife and sent our condolences for the whole board, and I said, when I worked here, Phil was my happy person. I know you work you have that person that always makes you happy. It was Phil and his purple shirt.
Yeah.
And what, how many people were there, like Campbell teachers from 15 years ago? It was unbelievable, the turnout he had. And he was buried with his Hawaiian shirt on because he always wore a Hawaiian shirt. And I don't, and he had a Beatles shirt underneath that and a suit jacket, and he was holding, I want to call it a pic, but the...
The baton?
The baton, the, yeah. It was, it was very, it was quite a testament to how much he was loved by this town.
Just so, I'm sorry to interrupt, just so you know, FOPA is already discussing renaming one of the scholarships in his honor. And there's already talk as well with, through FOPA with Friends of Music and Mrs. Laid and Jill Pennington about doing something and a couple, one of the things was potentially renaming the auditorium, and it could be done. And there's, so there's a couple of things already that the music community is working on to present eventually, so it's...
They'll like lockers. That was his push. He wanted lockers for his, that was his, his lockers for the instruments because that was the last time he came and spoke was about lockers and how expensive the instruments are.
I get a little teary. But just know, it is definitely, so if you need, I'm sure most of you anyways know who's in the FOPA and Friends of Music, so they're, they're good contacts to see what's going on, so everybody's on the same page, just an FYI.
I just want to say that I'm looking forward to the first day of school. I know that we'll be talking on the 28th, but I'm excited about this year. I really am. I think Dr. Jettie is going to definitely steer us in the right direction and a great direction. I think we're staffed to the point where we're going to open the doors and be very comfortable. It'll be a smooth transition, and I'm looking forward to this year.
So we have minutes from July 18, 2018 for approval. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the draft minutes from July 18.
A second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. 500. We have budget transfers?
There are budget transfers, and there's a document for those. And our BA can help us understand anything. Does anyone have any specific questions on, any on here? I know there's a couple that probably, there's a phone service one that probably sticks out a little bit, $17,000. That was to reallocate from the individual budget lines within the schools back into a district-wide account just to, there's a change in how the company billed us. They didn't bill us broken out based on location anymore, so it just made more sense to pay it out of a district-wide line. Is there anything other? We did, there's one for the food service mentor. We have contracted with Food for Schools for a second year to keep them involved to help Lauren as she adjusts to the new position for this next year. I see that role being slightly different than it was last year, so other than that, everything's pretty, nothing big.
Is there a motion for the budget transfers?
So made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero. Do we have the DOE 25 that needs to be signed? Can you bring that in?
Yes, I brought them. I'm sorry. You have a specific line to sign on?
I'm sure I do.
And then the board signs.
On this one, shall I just send it up?
In the, in the big box.
On the big box.
Yeah. Was there a signature page for the MS-25 as well?
Yes. Going to pass around to the board.
We skipped the financial.
All right, I looked at this online.
Well, you stopped talking. While we're doing that, I'm sorry. You just stopped talking, so I'm all set.
I had the written document that I provided for the board for their review last Friday. I'll just give a couple of updates based on that. The kindergarten, the modular, after some, it's been an interesting summer getting that all in place. The building came in a couple of weeks late. And as of the beginning of this week, we have electricity onboard. The classrooms are getting pretty well set up. The ramps are completed. We're in pretty good shape and getting ready to go. So the final inspections, I'm hoping will be early next week. We'll have to reach out to the town, have them come up, do final inspections, and we'll be ready to go.
Next week?
What's that?
Next week, they're doing final inspections.
Hoping to, yeah. I got to reach out to, we have a part-time building inspector currently. So making sure that we have, we get him scheduled for a day that he's available to come in.
So have the kindergarten teachers been able to get in there and start setting up for their open house?
Able to set up, yeah.
Yeah, that's cutting it close.
The secured entryway is nearing
If you could, because I know I asked you, while you're still on kindergarten, just let me clarify, because I know there were some community members that were inquiring as to why we didn't have a sprinkler system and
So based on my understanding of it through the fire code, is if the structure is at least twenty feet off the main building, it's not required to be sprinkled. I'm waiting on a response from the fire inspector himself to further clarify that. So we have some professional infant-like
Right.
documentation from it. We were told by the deputy fire chief and the fire inspector and the code enforcement officer that we're thirty feet off the building, it wasn't a requirement of the construction.
And is enough egress?
Yes.
Corey, can you just speak to the egress, speak to all the other life safety things? Because, you know, sprinkler systems often are used to protect the property more than life, right? So in the event of a fire in one, excuse me, in one of the kindergarten portables, how would students and staff
So it is fully integrated with the building fire alarm system. So if alarm gets pulled inside the building, it also goes off inside the modular. There is a fire extinguisher at either end of the building and a pull station. If there is an emergency, they can pull. Fire alarm will go off, flashing system. There is two exits out of each classroom, out into the hallway. There's multiple windows also out of each, which I know is small to them, be a challenge to get out the window. But there is egress there, and there is a door at either end of the building to get out. So that alarm is pulled within, under a minute, two minutes, everyone's out of that building. So, is that?
Yeah, that's helpful. I think until people have seen it, I mean, that hallway down the middle is, you know, gosh, it's as wide as a tapestry.
About eight feet wide.
Eight feet. So there's really excellent ability for the students to access that, and then the doors are right there. So.
And I think it's well-known, if it's not, I mean, the school itself does not have a sprinkler system.
That's correct. Other updates down at GMS, the new secure entryway is nearing completion as well. They put all the fittings on the doors for the buzzer system into the office and all that. The last step is they have to now tile the floor in there to clean it up a bit. Second part, I know I wasn't at the last board meeting. There were a couple inquiries. There was a budget transfer that involved the purchase of a drone for the Learning Commons here at Campbell High School. What the purpose of that was, I reached out to Julie Green, who's the CHS media specialist here, for further information and explanation. I have attached that email. The past couple of years, they have had a student that supplied a drone and used it for educational purposes within the, within the Learning Commons and Media Center. So this, in order for the high school to own the piece of equipment, continues with that, that purpose that they've had in the past. Like I said, there's an email from Julie in there that better explains it than I can. Last meeting, there was also a proposal that came forward from Windy Hill Associates, which is an architecture firm out of New Boston, in regards to reconfiguring the entryway at LMS. Bringing this forward in terms of, is this something we want to pursue? Do we want to have them put together a set of designs for us, get some construction documents together? That way we can get an RFP, get a solid bid, and put in for some of the state infrastructure money, and maybe be able to do this next summer to change that entryway, more secure entryway to LMS.
When do you have to apply for monies from the state?
I got to say, it's probably getting to the point where it's as soon as possible, because I don't know how much, how much they have left. I haven't seen an update recently. I don't know if you've received anything.
So you need to get an RFP before you could apply for money, correct?
We need good, Windy Hill, the architecture firm, would work with a contractor to get us a good estimate that we could apply for the grant based on. So, and then, once we have that, we get applied for the infrastructure money, we could then apply for, do the RFP and go out to bid. So we'd know what our parameters would be cost-wise.
So are you looking for a motion to?
To move forward with the, to contract with the architect, to start the design process.
And is that the sum, ten thousand dollars for the architect?
Ten thousand would be for the architect. He would come in and coordinate with, we could identify a contractor that we'd want to work with if we wanted a specific contractor. But he would work with them to build that set of numbers for us.
And is the same thing as GMS, as far as the percentage of monies that they would put forward and then the amount that we put forward?
Maybe eighty, twenty.
Eighty, twenty, right.
Yeah.
So if you get eighty percent of a project from the state, it's pretty well worth it for security.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
So you need a motion for ten thousand dollars on?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion for ten thousand dollars to hire the architect. Who is it?
Windy Hill Associates.
Windy Hill Associates for the entranceway at LMS.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain. Motion carries. Four one zero.
You? Moving on, the audit was completed, and that was what we used to complete the DOE 25. They were in for two days. There was no significant findings, procedural findings related to student activities, which is very, very common in our district, or in any district, really, in student activity areas. They did recommend, I did have a conversation with the director in charge that was here on the audit in regards to areas of gate receipts and parking fees. What they've seen in other schools is taking those, those monies out of the student activities, out of the main office in the high school, and creating what you would call an other special revenue fund for better tracking. When you would get to reporting at the end of the year, you would report it as a restricted fund balance in the general fund. It would combine with the general fund, and they would report together. What that would do is put gate receipts and parking fees under the school district policies for purchasing. Like if we wanted, if money was spent out of those funds, it would have a purchase order. It would go through the full payables process. You would see it on the manifests. So part of, part of what I would like to do is start in, as we get towards the end of the summer, I'll start developing that fund. Coming off of that, I know there's been some discussion about gate receipts and parking fees, what they're used for. I know in the past, there's been some situations where I think some boards in the past have said parking fees, you know, they should be used for maintenance of the parking lot. And I think there's been other occasions where it's been used for other things as the school comes in and presents, could we use this money to go towards this? So special, I forget the specific, I think it was Lori Roth House that had a specific item it was spent on.
Challenge Day.
Yeah, I believe it was Challenge Day. So in that, in that respect, we have the same type of proposal from Mr. Perez and Mr. Lonigan at the high school to use some of this money to benefit the students and, and bring in Challenge Day for a three-day program. I have put together some numbers. I don't want to run through them all. I have a couple. If I could just pass them around, gives an idea of, a couple of years ago, I only have the two, so if you want to share. But a couple of years ago, when the money was returned from the special, from the Student Activity Fund, returned to the SAU, recorded as a miscellaneous revenue, and then returned to the taxpayers as part of tax rate calculation. Doesn't necessarily follow what the board years ago had prescribed that that money would be used for. So this year, we did maintain that balance in the Student Activity Fund. And there's been a couple of projects throughout the parking lots, relining, renumbering, a new advisory-based fire evacuation lanes in the back. So we did use those towards relining the parking lot, doing some work there.
Michelle, is there anything as far as documentation of what the board?
It should be, I did put minutes there.
The twenty sixteen.
Two thousand and ten, when we were discussing the, when Dr. Cutler was discussing the, the $2 million shortfall, the board was trying to come up with revenues that the district could take in to help alleviate some of the budget constraints that would have caused. And that is when they decided to institute parking fees and bus fees and summer camp fees and other admission fees. The money was reinstated by the state, but some of the fees were capped. Because the parking fees, and there's documentation in there in the minutes to reflect that the parking fees were to be put towards maintenance, repair, upkeep of the parking lot.
Yeah.
And then bus fees would be put towards student transportation.
Yep. And we've eliminated the bus fees.
Corey, how much, on average, would you say maintenance on the parking lot costs?
There's a significant amount of work that could probably be done out there, considering cracked ceiling, lighting fixtures.
What did it cost to stripe it?
Striping in total, I think was around $5,000.
What's the cost of sweep?
That I don't know. I'd have to look back at the budget.
I think it's fifteen hundred dollars a sweep for the year.
That's about twelve hundred maybe.
Which we paid out of the budget. We did not pay out of that.
What's the cost of plow?
That's thirty-five thousand a year across the three schools.
When I read it, I kind of thought, if, I saw we gave it back to the town, and I saw we use it for other things, if it's there, if we don't need it for a year or two, it'd be kind of nice. When we did need it for something big in the parking lot, if there was a good chunk of money there. I thought, to me, it seems like it should be there if we're going to charge them for it.
It's really kind of minimal when you, when you think about the upkeep of the parking lot.
Yeah.
You're talking like, between like twelve, fifteen thousand dollars that you're taking in from the students. And that's going to cover snow removal. And then the monies are utilized in other areas at different times also.
Just, I don't know, I see if we're, if we're taking it for that, to me.
No, that's what I'm just wondering, like, you know, do the, do the maintenance costs add up to the whatever, you know, fifteen thousand dollars a year we're making in revenue? Is that a valid?
It's more than that. And just that, the snow removal alone is more than fifteen thousand. I would have to remove the snow, but it's a bonus to the taxpayers that we're charging. We have to remove the snow at the other two schools and don't have revenue from the kids.
That's true.
Boy, I mean, student parking the other two schools. Teacher parking.
Right.
It's a bonus.
In our respect, as I mentioned, I did put on there what the amount of the three-day program for Challenge Day would cost for this year. That was a quote that Mr. Perez provided to me. There's also the possibility that some of that cost could be deferred by offering one of those days to another school district. And that's, that's a common practice from right here. So I'd be looking.
When I was reading the minutes from the, you know, that you had put together from all the other meetings that had mentioned this, didn't, didn't quite feel right to me that parking fees were going toward Challenge Day. I don't personally know about Challenge Day, but I've read it, and I've seen the fight, and I've heard feedback.
It wasn't for all the kids. It was only for certain kids or a few.
Challenge Day was not for all the kids? And I understand that there are really important messages, but is there another, like, student-initiated or parent-initiated way to address these topics? And actually, Challenge Day, I went online, and they give us, there's like ten different ways to raise money for Challenge Day alternatively, you know, besides budgeting for it, you know? Grants potentially, you know, other things. So.
I think what we can do is possibly have Mr. Perez come in and maybe explain to us what exactly Challenge Day is, and how many people are involved, and what the cost is, and what they've done in the past as far as raising monies. I mean, because there are other student activity funds that possibly can go towards it.
And I personally would be curious, have, has bullying gone down in our school system? You know, have reports of bullying, you know? Like, what are the results of this program? It's been, if it's been going, it's not an inexpensive program. So those are questions I had.
So would it be with the board? Have us set up a time with Mr. Perez to come in and talk about.
If we can get him in on the next meeting, or, I think Mr. Lonigan is here, I think, at the next meeting.
Okay.
I mean, he can do the same thing.
All right. The other piece of that, that special revenue fund would be the gate receipts, and whether or not we will, the district would authorize the collection of receipts for football, home football games. You're not going to make much probably off of soccer, lacrosse.
We did not, you did, the board did not approve that policy, the procedures yet.
I know it's presented to us.
We discussed it, yeah.
So, that's part of the agenda tonight.
It was just for football, right?
Football and basketball.
We only charge for basketball.
Correct. But where the money goes is part of the question.
And then, yeah, the other piece being, the Booster Club has approached, saying would they have access if they proposed something for an expenditure such as the press box, something to do with the Alex field.
And that's what we talked about, is both monies going into a fund that could be utilized by the Booster Club in order to, for improvements throughout the different fields.
Yeah.
Really, all it is is just a holding spot for the monies that can be directed towards the different fields and
So that'd be, just if you're going, if you would approve the, their use of that, I would ask that they come in and request, have a specific project in mind and request a specific amount.
So do we need to approve where that money, just like switching the fund to a special revenue fund?
No, that, that piece is going to happen. It's the piece of, are we going to use gate receipt funding to help with the Booster Club if they, if they have a proposal or something? So how that would go into a motion, I'm not exactly sure, but just have
Booster Club just football, or is Booster all sports?
Yeah, it's down in the policies under, if it's an old and unfinished business.
My laptop's
I think it's two different conversations, right? We need to have a conversation about the parking fees in general, what we charge, where that goes, what's it allocated for.
Yeah, they are very, they are very separate.
Right, okay. And then also the gate receipt discussion.
There'd be restricted, restricted fund balance for, you know, the gate receipts would be for athletic purposes, field purposes. The parking would be for
And that's what we talked about, and that's why I thought we had approved it already, that that's what we talked about, is that both basketball and football gate receipts would be utilized only for the improvement as far as fields and equipment and that type of thing.
Facilities.
Michelle, do you recall if there was ever a motion, I don't vote on?
I don't believe there was ever a motion.
Yeah.
And do we have to outline what the, what the gate, I mean, what the fees are, what the membership costs and all those kinds of things, or is that?
No, that's something they can decide.
Okay. We decide the parking fees.
We're discussing that. We discussing that now?
I don't know.
Discussing what?
The parking fees? Is there something to discuss?
It's on the agenda.
Well, no, we just did. It was like an open discussion as far as parking fees, because I know that it might come up. Did you want to discuss it?
Well, we're going to get Mike Perez in here to talk about the Challenge Day. I think that's part of the question as well.
Right, and I, if, if Mike Perez is looking for monies for Challenge Day, I think that's something separate. And I, I'm not quite sure how they get tied into parking fees, because parking fees were for parking fees.
I think Lori Rothaus, she was that money for her Challenge. I know, that's why it kind of got tied in.
The thing is, if it ends up going back into the general fund, then if he needs money for Challenge Day, you know, it's kind of like one pool, ends up in one pool at the end. I mean.
I think the question also is if we're going back into general fund, why are we charging it if we're not using it for upkeep of the park? It just.
If we're just returning it.
The parking fee.
Right, if we're just returning it to the taxpayers, why are we charging?
You're not. You're putting it right back into the parking lot. You've asked this question three times the same way. It's like, it costs more than what we collect just to plow the place. Let alone striping and anything else as far as repairs, cracks, ceiling. It all, the cost is there.
I, I think the, the change has been, I want to make sure I understand it, Corey, but by taking it out of the just revenue, it's now in a special fund that can roll over.
That's correct.
Whereas in the past.
It'd be a restricted fund balance and the balance would sit, just like this year, we carried, it carried over as part of the student activity as it would be considered a deferred revenue. We did not spend it, therefore it's sitting as a balance.
So, so we could let it build up and use it strictly for parking.
For parking.
When we have to repave someday, there could be more.
A lot of $100,000 to repay, like we did at G M S.
But didn't we tell Lonigan that they were going to have it?
At what?
The parking fee money?
No.
I thought we did.
We voted on it.
We voted on it.
They could take 16, was it 16? Something.
Mr. Perez and Mr. Lonigan, that they could have control of the parking fee money.
No, you didn't vote it on that.
No.
I swear we talked about it.
Yeah, I thought, I know we talked about it. At our last meeting.
When do you think it might have been?
The last time Bill was here. Mr. Lonigan was here.
So like May?
Yes. I think that's when it was and we talked about it and he. Do you, am I going crazy?
No, I picture it.
I mean, don't answer that, anybody out there.
I picture us being at town hall and talking about it, but yeah.
Yeah.
Were they there for the, um, they were there for the garden proposal? And somehow the parking fees came up and Challenge Day came up and we discussed it at that meeting.
That was earlier than May, because I remember the conversation. I don't remember a vote, but I do remember a conversation.
Maybe we didn't vote about, vote it. We did talk about it at late.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
So let's just put Challenge Day to one side and we'll, we'll talk about Challenge Day. I mean, I don't even, how much we talking as far as the cost of Challenge Day?
$15,000?
$15,000, yeah.
If, if we have three Challenge Days.
Yeah.
So two at the high school and one at the middle school, the cost would be about $15,000.
Yep.
We buddy up with another district and one of those days is taken on by another district.
So have they ever budgeted Challenge Days?
Tiger at G M S.
I haven't needed to.
We did it every, every year.
Parking fees.
No.
No.
They haven't.
That's what I'm saying, why wouldn't they budget for it?
It hasn't happened in years.
Oh, okay.
It real, it hasn't happened in years.
Budget's coming up, so you can budget for it.
The Challenge Day hasn't happened in years, is that what you're saying?
Oh, right, it happened that once and then it had, or it hasn't happened since.
I think, like I said, the next time Mr. Lonigan's here, we can ask him about Challenge Days and I'm certain he's planning on putting it into his budget.
All right. Included in the report as well is the draft audited financial statements. Based on how New Hampshire retirement system, they have a part, there's a liability that the New Hampshire retirement system has to put into our audited financial statements. They're not going to issue that number until February, so we won't have final statements until February, March timeframe from our auditors. But we do have good numbers that we can base everything on. We did our state reporting on. I started having conversations with the auditor in charge, or the director in charge, about extending the relationship with Plazek and Sanderson and reducing their costs. So he's doing a full review of, we've taken that audit and gone from probably a, a four or five-day audit to a two to three-day audit, so I'm hoping he comes back with a proposal that, that reduces some cost out of that audit fee.
Do we have a contract?
What's that?
We have a contract with them for a while or?
This was the last year.
It was.
So he's a, he's going to bring up, bring back a, a proposal to us, probably for a, an additional three-year engagement. And if we go three years, he can probably reduce that cost even more. I don't know how far it's going to go, but it's worth a shot to see.
Do we need to shuffle around to other, other firms that, that do, that audit?
We can. We can do an R F P in the fall and see what other costs come in. I think they're going to be pretty comparable across the board and just knowing, Plazek and Sanderson is a, a reputable firm that has a lot of clients and over 200 municipal clients in the state. So it's a good group. I don't know. And if you go into a first-year engagement with a new audit firm, you're looking at additional fees just to redocument all your controls and procedures. You're boosting it back to a five-day audit, probably increasing the cost in the first year, so.
Where you're reducing the days almost like 40%, you would think there'd be some type of savings coming our way in your contract.
You hope. We'll see what they come back with.
Yeah.
Other than that, in terms of food service, Lauren Crowley's here. She's been, she started officially August 1st, so she's been working on scheduling menus, doing the things she has to. We made a couple of changes in terms of our lead positions. All three lead positions are now going to be full-time at the three schools to try and give greater support to her at each building. She's also doing a full review on how each, each site works.
The menu's going to change dramatically? The lunch menus? I'm just curious.
The menu's going to change.
Okay.
Now, it's going to evolve. It's not going to be, you're not going to show up day one and the entire menu's going to be different and the kitchen's going to look different.
Some kids like consistency.
She's going to work, work towards it, but she does.
Chicken patty Tuesday.
Some people don't.
She does have a lot of ideas and she's working with, with her staff to try and make changes.
Since you mentioned menus and schedules, the only thing I'll.
You want French toast sticks?
Nope, no, I don't.
I know what you're going to say.
I didn't care about the food, just that it's posted timing.
Knew it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Not the first day of the month.
There's nothing more frustrating than coming out of, and I'm certain that the mothers and fathers will agree, that you come out of a holiday or the end of the month and you look for Monday because, as I'm sure Liz would do the same thing, okay, tell me, what do you want for lunch? What don't you want?
Yeah.
And then they're going to school on Monday and you have no idea what's for lunch.
So I think she has started a Litchfield Dining Services Twitter account, which I believe she will put the links to the menus on.
I don't tweet.
Put information out.
Well, that's great that they're pointing it, but you got to put it before the start of the month. It's like the start of school. When's the first menu coming out?
It'll happen. Um, when's the first menu coming out? Uh, they're not posted yet.
I don't have any of that.
I'll talk to her tomorrow. We'll get them out there.
I saw, I saw her, the Twitter.
Yep.
The Twitter account and I, I showed my kids because the picture for the Twitter account is a lovely lineup of yogurt parfaits with fresh fruit and granola.
That was hers?
Yeah, and I was like, wow!
That doesn't mean they're offering those.
Well, I don't care.
I do know the menu is completed. It just needs to be posted.
She may, she may not know that she.
What's that?
Them to me to put up on the web. She may not know that.
I'm just saying, or like two or three times last year, and it seems like every year. It's not every month.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's several times you've been looking for it and it's not there.
You're being generous.
We'll get them out there.
I don't want the ones that get mad at me like she did Derek, so.
I'm so excited though. I'm so excited to have her on board and to see what kind of evolutionary changes we can find.
Evolutionary change.
Yeah, we'll get there. Right, Corey? Exactly.
I'm working on it.
That's all I got unless anyone else?
The only thing I want to mention is the D O E 25 that we sent around is the form and all that information is used to calculate the cost of the school year. So if a student were to come in from somewhere else and wanted to come, so I'll just share the numbers with you. If they wanted to come to G M S, a student outside of the district would pay $17,448. The middle school is $14,727 and the high school is $15,126. They're up quite a bit from last year.
$1,500 each.
Yeah.
But that's not our, that's not our per pupil spending, right?
That's our cost per student out of district.
It went up $1,500 a student in one year?
But when we calculate per pupil spending, is that?
In financial, financial aid is that.
Does that include the transportation and?
That makes sense.
Everything's in the, it's all calculated through the D O E 25.
Okay.
Everything's in there.
Okay. Gotcha.
So with that, we need a motion to approve the rates.
The tuition rates?
Yeah.
We'll make a motion to approve the tuition rates for 18, 19?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain.
So we, we would accept tuitions, student, if parents pay tuition to our, to our district, we would accept those students, except for maybe in kindergarten and first grade. Just joking.
Well, if they bring in $17,000, we'll get you a pair. So if we can get a couple of those, we'll be all set.
Well done.
Yeah, so you're good with parking fees?
I am, unless someone else wants to have any other discussion with parking.
Moving over. All right, so, under policies, so basically, we had a communication from the state that I think we've shared with you that bas, basically, there was an aspect of S I that had not been included in the assurances that we signed at the last meeting. And so they've just pointed out to us that going forward, this will be something that we'll need to have included. So essentially, it's requiring districts to adopt policies that prohibit assistance in obtaining a new job for a school district employee, contractor, or agent who is known or believed to have engaged in sexual misconduct with a minor student. And so it's really, I mean, it's obvious that that's our practice, right? So just to be really clear, that's what we do. But we need to make sure that we have a policy covering that. And part of this has emerged just out of some of the things that you read in the paper, happening in other districts. And so it's just important that we make sure that we have our policy, so that when we sign the general assurances next year, yes, we have policy, this is how we handle that, okay? So be on the lookout for that. We'll get it developed. We're going to get some guidance on what model policy would look like, because that's not something I want to try to craft on my own. I think we'll take some expert opinions on what it should look like and then we'll get that shared out.
Mike, can I just bring up, when I read that, I just got a little worried about the word believed. Like if, if an employee down the line said, you know, we thought he had, you know, if we're giving a, and I didn't know if that was a policy, if this is just a word in there, but I just.
No.
Yeah, that's.
I was just worried if the word.
We don't have it, but from the law, it talks about the belief. Because what was happening is that people would have a belief or suspicion and they may not pursue it criminally. They may not turn it over to authorities. They just say, we don't like that, but they're leaving anyway.
But can, they wouldn't bring that up to another employee and open us up for?
Well, so this is why we need to make sure that we've got policy that really clearly structured what that would look like. But there's been, you know, an unfortunate history of sort of moving, people moving along and people just saying, well, now they're out of our hair. And the problem is that's, well, we all know what the problem is, so we need to make sure that we have a way to address that. So the federal law is saying, if this is new federal law, it says you can't engage in that. You have to, if you have a belief, you have to pursue it. And the only, and then if the person's exonerated by authorities, then, you know, that's, that's the end of it. But until that's done, you can't just turn the other way.
Hard to prove, you know, what you believe is and what you believe isn't.
Yeah, I just worried when I saw that believed.
Yep, I think when it's.
Don't ever say it, I believe, but.
Yeah, when they write it, it'll be, it's not just, you know, I believe. It's got to be, there's got to be some substance behind it.
Okay.
And then the other.
And you have to meet conditions, like you have to, I mean, it has to be reported appropriately. There's three different conditions that it has to, that have to be met. So it's not just somebody who's been convicted. There is that belief of probable cause, so.
And then the other piece is, and this really comes back to more of a practice that we need to make sure that we have in place, and that is that if any of our employees were asked to speak in court to a matter, then we would really need to make sure that there had been clear communication across the chain. So the way it's recommended is that the building principal would know if there was a teacher or an employee in the building who was asked to speak in court in their official capacity. And then it would be passed up the line to the central office. We would involve legal counsel, make sure that we understood what could and cannot be said. So frankly, that's rolling out of Bedford.
Yeah.
And what recently occurred there. And so we just want to make sure that our employees, I mean, for their own protection, they need to understand what, what they can and can't say relative to their role.
And there's a distinction between what they can say as an individual as opposed to what, as a representative of the district. So they are, they can say basically anything they'd like as an individual, but as a representative of the district? Is that what I read? That they, you know?
And I think for, if there were somebody who felt that they wanted to go and speak in a court, they, the opportunity for them to speak with school district council to say, you know, here's what you can't do. You're not speaking as, you know, you are speaking to your First Amendment right as an individual. We're not talking about what you can say as a school district employee. So that opportunity to clarify that for them. So we'll be back with both of those. Those topics are, are hot and we want to make sure that we get them wrapped up.
Thank you for bringing those to us in such a timely manner after those events recently.
It's a gray area.
Well, now it's working, and now it's working on the policy.
Yeah.
And, and in fairness, just speak to the value of our attorneys, right? So they literally had this memo out to us very quickly, so they're, they're working hard for us to be on the front end of it, so.
Let's speak on E H B.
Yeah, I'm just, so we, we covered D F I E, right?
Do you want, does the board want to approve the procedures for gate receipts? I think if the board approves the procedures at least, that will give us definitive direction.
For them to go on.
Can I, can I ask, sorry to bring it up, since the football and basketball parents, should we, should we ask if the money try and be used more for the basketball court and the football field or is that stepping on toes? I, I just wonder if that's a legitimate.
It goes to the Booster Club, which does all the sports.
It's all sports, correct. Yeah, because the Booster Club's the one that's going to be collecting them.
Collecting, yeah. Procedures, there are procedures on the.
Got it, got it.
Right.
We collect.
They just have access to it.
But they would have to ask the district for it?
They would need permission.
Okay. Right, so they're not, okay.
So right now, though, basketball is char, is it basketball?
Basketball.
That's charging for their games, are they using the proceeds of their own games? And is that going to then change?
It's only like one or two bucks, isn't it?
Yeah, but still, it's a lot of money when you start getting close to the playoffs.
Replacement uniforms, replacement equipment, they, they use it for that type of stuff. It's still used for the same type of purpose.
The Booster Club fund.
You're right. Is that true or is it going to the athletics budget and then the Booster Club has access?
It goes, and it'll go into a restricted fund balance within this, this other rev, special revenue fund for use if the, the boosters can request to use some. And I think you would still have, Jared would still have, athletic department would still have access as well. Because they do use it. The athletic department does use it through the Student Activity Fund for replacement uniforms, things that, that they do need that are outside of their budget.
I thought every sport had their own little fund. Like they did their own fundraising and had their own fund.
And they have their own budget.
And if they do sell whatever. That's what I thought when we did the whole wrestling thing. Huh.
I don't know if wrestling has one. I know a couple of the sports do have small, like fundraisers.
That's what I thought they used to buy uniforms and singlets or whatever. Fight gear, whatever it's going by now.
See, I, I would think that the gate receipts would go into the fund, the Booster Club fund, and would be utilized for maintenance of other fields, improvements on fields, scoreboards if need be, and the same thing even in the gym, if, you know, there was something that needed to be repaired rather than the equipment or uniforms.
We can do that. That's, yeah.
I mean, that's, that was, when we talked about football and the gate receipts of football and the Booster Club was looking to do that, and it was more or less to like raise monies and, and same thing, it could like snowball into an amount, okay, now we put lights up on the football field. You know, or we can get grandstands, or we can do something on the basketball court. Or we can get a school board for the baseball field, you know, that type of thing.
Yeah.
I mean, Jared has his own budget. We're going back to like individual budgets. I mean, Jared has his own budget, we're going back to like individual budgets, and rather than collecting monies from one area to do it, that I, I think if he needs money in this budget, then put it in the budget.
He's gotta find it, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree. So restrict the access for the, for the booster club and for chairman fields.
If not just the booster club, I'd say, I would think the school could still also utilize it for an improvement. You know, booster club may not know that we need a section of, you know, grass out there to be replaced with sod, you know, before a game, kinda thing. I mean, that's what I would think, that's what you'd wanna use gate receipts for, for the improvements of either fields or courts.
So you know, how are, how are uniforms paid for? Are they, they're paid for from the?
Well, that's the question, right? What is paid for out of the, the A D budget?
My understanding of uniforms, my understanding of uniforms, they're on a rotating basis as far as changing uniforms, it should be like a tax.
I don't think. That's within the athletic budget?
Yes.
But then what about?
Baseball will get a uniform, then three years later, football probably get a uniform. I don't know exactly how it works, but that's my understanding as far as.
That is budgeted.
With the sports budget.
But then field improvements and stuff, isn't that, grounds and maintenance, so that's also in the budget? So I think.
There is, but there are things that are maybe outside of that, those parameters that it will occur or that you want. Bleachers, for an example, I mean, you know, you're looking for a couple hundred thousand dollars for bleachers.
Right, right. I just think, I feel like we should delineate exactly what is covered by the budget, what is covered by fundraisers by each team, and what is covered by the boosters and what, you know.
Where the feedback from the teams too, I feel like.
Well, I think it's up to the coach. I mean, the football team bought a buffalo, whatever that water thing is, that's what they fundraise for, like extras.
Right. And then there's concessions, what do concessions go to?
Booster.
Send your kids with five bucks every time they go to a game.
The concession, the concessions go directly to the booster, so we have nothing to do with any of that.
Well, that's how they bought those new cases, the trophies.
Could we make the motion that it, the gate receipts go directly to field and court improvements and repairs?
That's what I'm saying.
We just make it that way and that way?
For those fields.
For those fields?
Yeah. That's my thought is, you know, when the booster club came and present, I mean, they're looking for like, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars down the road and it's the way to start it.
Did they ask for any money for the press box?
No.
No?
Well, originally they did.
But then again, it's all self-funded. But that's double dipping. We want you, we want grounds.
So, right.
Do they have to pay the groundskeeper for mowing the football field and the track?
No.
You just want extras if they want grass. I know we have a grass crisis.
I just use that as an example.
You want it all, don't you?
No, you get rid of the grubs, I'll donate grass.
And then is this in a fund that rolls over every year too?
Be a restricted fund balance.
That's what I'm saying, so if they're looking long range down the road for lights, bleachers, whatever it could be. I mean, the baseball field, if I'm not mistaken, doesn't have a scoreboard.
So I just keep coming back, I just keep coming back to the fact that the boosters are a nonprofit, right? That they do fundraising, they raise money, they have their own accounting, they buy things for the schools' benefit. So are the, is the gate receipts district money or is it booster money?
It's district money.
Okay.
Our money, district.
But the booster club is the one who does like all the work? So they come to us and say, hey, we'll look for fifty thousand dollars for bleachers. Okay, let's see what we're having to find. So it's kinda like saying the booster club's spending it.
Why wouldn't we just do that as a district? Why don't we say we should have bleachers and spend fifty thousand dollars on bleachers? If we've collected that much in gate receipts, I just, I don't know.
And I think that's the whole idea, I think.
'Cause we don't give money to other nonprofits that have other improvements that they wanna do on our, on our buildings or our fields or anything.
Well, no, I think what it is, the booster club will come and suggest to us what.
They identify the needs.
We're not collecting the monies for the booster club, we turn around and give it to them. It's all gonna be going back into our, our fields. So if you want to, we can discount the booster club altogether as far as in the language. That, you know, like what Rob just said, that the monies collected from gate receipts will be utilized for improvements on fields.
I'm, I'm, I feel more comfortable with that than.
So I make a motion that gate receipt monies collected are used for improvements and renovations on fields and courts. Does that work?
That works.
So they can't buy a scoreboard, they have to buy grass?
Well, that'd be an improvement on field and courts. I would.
Anything to do with, yeah, anything to do with the upkeep of the fields and the improvement of the fields. I mean, that was the whole process, I think, the thought process, even with the booster club, you know, collect them so that we'd have monies to do things down the road.
Okay, second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
What? I have a headache. Don't take it personally, I have a headache.
Is the collection procedures back for September 5th?
Yep. EHB?
Yes, so EHB, basically you have a policy recommendation there. Find my spot now. So basically there was change in legislation regarding special ed records, and the change is highlighted for you, but essentially what it boils down to is that we had to keep records until a student turned twenty-six in the past. And now parents can actually request in writing that we retain those records until their thirtieth birthday. So, you know, we can either destroy them on the twenty-sixth birthday, or if they ask, we'll hold them until thirty. But we wanna make sure that our policy is aligned with the law. So you can see the, the strikeout was on the, the old language, and now you see the new language that's consistent with the new law. And that's the only change to it, is just making it compliant, so.
Interesting. Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to policy EHB.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. As those are. Excellent. And we don't have any manifest?
You did it before you got here.
Oh, okay.
Wow. You guys are fast.
You guys are all set.
You're early.
All right. That'll bring us to public input again.
What about the school board goals that you have here?
That's just a placeholder right now, that it's something that, once Dr. Jettie gets his feet wet and we get going.
My feet are wet.
He's enough to his knees now.
Once he dries off in the fire. It's just more or less a spot for, you know, where we're gonna be talking like long range goals.
Oh, I'd be happy, right? Do you need a few more seconds? Actually, no, I'll go with, give me a second, it's very quick. Hi. Natalie Herdy, Fourteenth Line Street. Hi, Dr. Jettie, hope you're having a good summer. I actually, since it's a placeholder, I will give food for thought, as you heard from me before, Dr. Jettie. Currently, and I, please correct me if I am wrong, because things change and I might have missed it, but as far as I know, one of the goals of the school board is that ninety percent of high schoolers that graduate high school go off to college, or accepted, I'm not sure what the wording is. Am I right? Is that still, okay. I would like to propose, again, food for thought for the school board and Dr. Jettie, a change to that goal. And instead of ninety percent of college students go, of students being accepted and going off to college, I would propose that it becomes a hundred percent of graduating high schoolers have a post-secondary plan in place. I feel it is more, first of all, more inclusive. That means even a sped kid who can never go to college, unfortunately, can still have a life plan put in place with the help of the people that surround them in school. It is also inclusive of those, those students who don't wanna go to college and who, as you very well know, some of you've heard me, oh, just a few times, they don't feel like they're being left behind and they're less important because they don't wanna go to college. I think as, and I was just, it's funny, I was just reading that your mission is to provide rigorous and varied educational opportunities that challenge and engage all students to attain their highest level in intellectual, social, blah, blah. It says all students. This becomes a goal that impacts and touches all students. So that would be my recommendation, my request, to take this under consideration when you go over your goals. On a kind of parallel note, I'm gonna do a little plug. Those of you who know that a group of us are working with the schools to help out through this little group of parents, on October tenth, the, this, I'm kinda asking for help, we are asking for help, I guess. October tenth is the day that the seniors, the juniors and other grades are doing the PSATs and what other testing, so the seniors will not have school. We've been asked by Joey Calanum, the school guidance counselor, to reach out to businesses to offer job shadowing opportunities for those seniors, instead of them having a day off to maybe be able to utilize that to further explore where they wanna go next. So there's like four or five of us, we're reaching out to companies, businesses. If you have spouses who potentially would be, because obviously I know most of you where you work and a lot of your teachers and work here in the school district, but either yourself or your spouses, if you could please spread the word, it'd be appreciated. It is kinda short, like last minute, because Jody was like, oh, why don't we do this? So we're trying the best we can, but we're just a few, so a few would be willing, again, willing to reach out and see who can help. That would be lovely. Everybody's got my number or email, so you can just let me know, but that would be appreciated, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good idea.
Janine Aintle, Forty-three Tanager Way. First, I just wanna welcome Dr. Jettie, this is the first meeting I've been at where you have joined us.
Thank you.
We're really excited to have you in Litchfield. I am both a first grade teacher at GMS, as well as I have a first grade student at GMS, so I have a lot of vested interest in these enrollment numbers. So I wanted to mull it over a little bit since the earlier conversation and just make a few more points. While, I think I can say this part on behalf of all the first grade teachers, is that we really do appreciate hearing the board show concern and trying to think of ways to support us and knowing that these are really important years at the beginning and knowing, hearing that you would like ideally to keep the numbers twenty and below and that you know that that's educationally sound. And we really appreciate looking into what the possibilities are and ways to help us. My thoughts about a program para are that getting a program para still leaves the classroom teacher with twenty-three or more, I think it'll be more, twenty-three kids that we're responsible for, that the classroom teacher is responsible for. Getting to know the kid, assessing the kid, keeping portfolios of data, writing report cards, holding conferences, and, you know, teaching him to read and write in there somewhere. It's still a lot of kids that the classroom teacher is solely responsible for, no matter how many paras he put in there. The program para is still under the, the direction and guidance during the course of the day of the classroom teacher, so it can, while it can be a help, it can also add to our workload. I also have a concern about getting too many bodies in those small little classrooms. I'm not talking about fire codes, I'm talking about educationally sound environment where you now have twenty-three or more kids, the classroom teacher, we have a one-on-one para, we have a shared para. Sometimes reading and math tutors come in and work with kids in the room, OT therapists come in and work with kids in the room. They're not big rooms, and so that's already potentially, what I just named is twenty-seven bodies in the room at one time before adding another program para. So I do have a concern about just getting too many bodies in there and just making it a distracting environment. I think that, I bet everybody would agree, that keeping class numbers low is the most educationally sound approach. And the benefits of having good, solid environments to thrive in, in kindergarten and first grade can be felt all the way up through CHS. Those benefits, maybe it's hard to directly link it, but they will be felt all the way up through the rest of their school years if we have good, solid foundation in kindergarten and first grade. It's a concerning trend to me that in kindergarten and first grade, it feels like we roll the dice and see what we get. And if it ends up not being ideal, we fix it by second grade. That's when we add another, you know, that's when we add a fifth teacher and spread out those numbers and, and, you know, make the situation a little bit more ideal. In kindergarten and first grade, we never really know what we're gonna get.